Are they gonna come and, and present it to us?
Yeah.
I couldn't quite figure out where the dotted lines with all that.
Well, and I told him that too, those attachments wasn't even open. He goes, well, it's the same thing. Okay, why you send them all?
Well, now you tell me.
The bottom was basically what it is. The way I figured, the top two was just their name and something else. I finally went, got to a computer that would open it. And, but that's, yeah. I didn't know if we needed to do anything on that.
We had to figure out if any association with anybody else in the county. If any, then there may not be.
You guys want up here?
Sure.
You wanna? Here, let's get this.
Where you want it at?
Well, I have a small version.
We got for each one of you.
Okay, okay. There, and you guys can see that, okay?
We have, we've completed the load rating of the bridges on the haul routes for the specific truck that they gave us, which is the controlling truck is the one that's gonna be carrying the generators. So they provided us, you know, the load buoy layout and wheel spacing, dimensions, the loads on every tire and that sort of thing. So this piece of paper here is the list. I think there's 27 bridges on their haul routes. Of course, the definition bridge is greater than 20 feet. So we did not look at the thing less than 20 feet yet in case, thanks to everyone, if they change a route or something. But we haven't done that till we're on the smaller stuff. This is the load rating on the bridges. And on the map, we have basically highlighted yellow and blue. And the yellow ones are the bridges that, as it says in the key over there, with inadequate loading. And the blue is the witness of damage loading. So running the numbers that we have run, we came up with, I think it's 12 sites. 12 sites that came up with inadequate loading out of the 27. Let me go over this little chart. So, you know, the first column is the county number, the second is the bridge number. The third is the span links on, so if it's a simple span, it's gonna be one number, 24 feet, but it's three span, there's three numbers there. The bridge type. That first one, like on Q9, RCSC means reinforced concrete span. C means continuous span over three spans. The next one, RFB stands for rigid frame box. The third one, RCDG, reinforced concrete decker. This is concrete, two concrete beams that kind of protrude below the deck. The next one, RCSH, reinforced concrete slab. Hox is a hox slab. Of course, RFB is rigid frame box, RCB reinforced concrete box. And then the rest of those SBMS stands for steel beam, single span or simple span. The last two columns, we have what we call inventory rating and operating rating. And your inventory rating is basically a factor of safety of over, it's around 2.1. So this is what you normally would post at for, if you wanna keep a bridge in its inventory indefinitely, you're gonna have loads for the next 30 years on something. You tend to post an inventory rating. By law, you're allowed to post anywhere between inventory and operating. The operating rating is a factor of safety of 1.3, about 30%, so normally what people do is post an inventory, a little, little, somewhere between there. And then the operating rating is what we would use for specialty loadings, like moving a house or, and this wind farm would fall under that category. You're not gonna have that many times over this bridge with these loads, maybe a dozen or something. So we would recommend that you look at this based on the operating number. That number over there is basically a ratio, so on this, you're looking at that last column there, operating rating. If that number's 1.0 or greater, then we say it's sufficiently strong enough to handle the load. It's less than one, and it's not. Now there, if you drill down in some of these numbers, there are a couple of here that are very close. Like you look down at R-3, it's 0.98, which is within 2%. And we say that's, I think there's two of these that are close. There's a 0.98 on R3.
0.95.
107. We think those are within the margins of error that the commission, but we think you would be okay to allow the load over those two as well, which basically puts you down to 10 bridges. So you essentially have two choices. You try to find a different route or you either upgrade or replace these structures to handle, handle the load. Sometimes, in other wind farm projects we involve, they sometimes take use like temporary structure or something over a bridge to get loads across. Our opinion is that it's the county's benefit to get what you have upgraded so that once the project is complete, then you actually get, get a benefit because your structure's now been upgraded and strengthened. So that would, you know, from the county's perspective, it'd be a nice thing. So that's where we're at. And you can see the majority of these quote-unquote bridges are in the, say, 20 to 50 foot range.
What's that mean?
It means it's a three span, so 28 foot, 35 foot, 28 foot.
That's a long.
Yeah, yes, that was a long.
They don't give you the, I mean, you tow loads up to get the full length of it.
Correct.
Okay.
And you notice, you- We've got a couple asterisks over there. There are two bridges that we were not able to find plans on. So those are what we call engineering estimate. You see the asterisks over there.
Okay.
And based on the era when these bridges were built, I mean, our engineers have been load rating bridges for 40 years. And we're pretty familiar with bridges built in this certain era, this certain era, and the construction.
What they did.
Right. So on this one, S7, we are saying it passes. Q9, we're saying it does not. And that's just based on our engineers' knowledge, unable to locate. And if it's a concrete bridge, it's got rebar and it's buried in there, you can't see it. So if it's a steel bridge, you can measure the steel and you don't need plans because you can measure everything that's exposed and do the calculus. And base it, you know, the still in certain eras is stronger. The older you get, it tended to be, you know, maybe weaker, maybe 30, 30,000 PSI or 28,000 PSI. And 36,000 nowadays are using like 50,000 PSI for steel beams. Could be, though, by upgrade, if the substructure is in good condition, you could change out just the superstructure. Like if you got, say, concrete abutments and they're in good shape, then it's got, the majority of these are steel beams. You could replace those steel beams.
With heavier ones.
With heavier ones and reuse the abutments. But if you, if you got a structure that's got wood back walls or something like that, then we would say no. And that's gonna be an individual case by case. Each bridge would have its own recommendation. Here, let's take these, put heavier beams in, or here, let's do that. One of the options on, on smaller structures too, depends on what you guys want to do, but in the past, sometimes, especially on stuff that's below 20 feet, what we've done is maybe just leave what's there as a form and pour a new concrete slab over the top of it with big rebar in it. Essentially, then that new deck becomes the new bridge. And the stuff underneath, that no longer even functions as the structural carrying capacity.
So define though, less than 20 feet, it's still a bridge.
Well, less, we haven't even looked at these structures yet below 20. The lawyer definition of bridge is greater than 20. And that's a definition was set by Washington DC.
I see.
And you, we've got pretty good information on this stuff because you're required by law to look at it, have it looked at every two years. So you've got files on them and all this. Now, we had to go hunting for some plans, which took some time. But, but once we decide no, you know, we're gonna fix these, we're gonna stay with these route, then we're gonna go with the smaller, which we haven't done yet. But, you know, the 15 footers and the 10 footers and that kind of thing. Which our experience has been, if you got 27 bridges, you probably got another 27 of these smaller types.
And there's gonna be a lot of them that are wood?
Yeah. And if they're wood, they're just not gonna, they're not gonna pass.
It's, and again, it's a bridge. It's not a tube.
Right.
12-foot tubes or box culverts are excluded.
We're gonna look at everything.
Yeah.
And actually, by bridge, a box, see the definition we're talking about, it's just span link. It has nothing to do with the type.
Yeah.
So if it's a tube that's bigger than 20 foot, it's a bridge. If it's a box bigger than 20 foot, it's a bridge. Like a, a double 10-foot box is called a bridge. But you could have a steel beam structure that goes 15 feet, but by definition, it's not a bridge. It's less than 20. It's all about this 20-foot total length thing.
So that's what you keyed on, if you will, 20 foot and above.
Right.
Up till right now.
Yes.
That's what you done, yeah.
Okay. Just because, just on the outside chance that if there was a route change, we wouldn't wanna spend a lot of work looking at these little structures.
I just have a quick question now. The Next Era team, Chris and Corey, they've, they've got this data now, are they?
No. No, we've just brought this, we presented to the commission.
Gotcha.
We haven't met with Next Era or anything. So, I mean, we work with your guys as best and-
Gotcha.
So, I mean, our recommendation would have us sit down with that team and go over this data, get their thought, or give them this data, go with their thoughts and then-
Okay.
Because it essentially becomes an engineering, there's an engineering solution to everyone.
Sure.
It looks like most of it's coming in on 63 Highway. And then they're bringing a lot of it through the Lilis Road or 24th Road. Is where they're going east and west off of 63. And then they just go north and south off of that, basically. The way I read it. But the-
Yeah, the dashes are-
32nd Road's got a couple of them on it. 32nd Road's got a couple of bridges on it.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, the main roads for getting them into the county, see they're bringing, like 24th Road that goes through Bancroft and crossed Lilis. See, they go north and south off of it. And, and then they come up 63 or come down south from 63, from 36, I don't know.
I was told the main state highway would be 36.
Is 36 comes south?
Comes south off of 36.
Well, I didn't know. I see they, they got a mark coming out of Havensville too, so, you know, down there at the bottom. But I don't know. But it is marked all the way up, which we don't get to 36th Street on this map, but, or 36 Highway. But that's probably an adequate deal. I'm surprised they don't come across the, the parallel, but.
You know, we talked a little bit about, you were talking about the possibility of other routes is kind of maybe what you're looking at.
It's not gonna change much. You're still gonna have that many bridges or more and plus the intersections and stuff.
This is the thing you gotta have. You gotta know where they're wanting to go and-
Yeah.
You don't see a better way, Dennis, is what they-
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
They're gonna run into, and somebody, you know, has used their best judgment to make this route-
Watch your earth.
Yeah.
But I say even the bridges that don't quite meet it, like that one that's, that R3 that's 0.98, and that other one that's 85, I think they need to be really looked at.
So the state takes care of all the bridges on the state highways? Because I see you got some on the Centraya Highway.
Right, we've not looked at any of that. They have to apply to the state for that route and the state can just will-
Whatever truck they give, just like we did here. These here, they're bringing them in here.
So, well, you guys babysit that in here or has that somebody to stay?
That will do that.
I see. Okay. So there's that whole other process going on along all the state roads.
Right.
Okay.
Let's see, this one here is the one- Yeah, you guys don't have a jurisdiction on where state highways and so. But the, okay, the state can just do the same thing we're doing, which is take their truck, rate it for each specific bridge.
But it's- So they sub that out to a, could flatten struggle or if they get-
Personnel.
They have their own personnel. If they get super busy, they sub things out, but they got their own.
Typically, they do it. It doesn't matter.
They have a whole office building full of engineers.
That not, that's not in Horton.
No, they're not. Back in the, yeah, the Eisenhower Building, they call it now, north of the, north of the Capitol. Used to be the old-
North of the Capitol or west of the Capitol?
No, it's north. West is docking and that is closed, you know, full of all that nasty mess.
Yeah. There are a few guys that go in there every day, but I think if I sign an affidavit saying it falls in, we're not liable.
Yeah. The, the mechanical system for the entire state system is in the basement, docked, the bottom two floors. The heating and cooling and everything, and then there's tunnels that go to all the buildings. So the state's been wrestling with, there's really, structurally docking is fine.
Is it?
Yeah, but it's got asbestos and mold and, you know, this and that and the other. So they've been arguing, the state hired a mechanical firm to design a whole new heating and cooling system somewhere else so they could tear all this down and the biz came in super high.
Of course they did.
So then there's, one option is tear apart the building down. To me, it seems like they had to hire, say, three architects, get a little stipend, say, come up with your ideas. I think if you strip that building down to just bare concrete, you could start over. I don't know why you can't replace the windows and everything, just build a bare concrete, start over.
Yeah. Make it a new building.
Yeah, but I don't know. We like to tear things down and start over.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes that's, did you watch that New Orleans deal? Where they tried to blow the cranes off.
Oh, the cranes?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Hard Rock?
Yeah, yeah.
That didn't quite work the way I wanted it to.
That partial collapse of that building.
Hurry up, 'cause the storm's coming, by the way.
They got one down, but the other didn't come down, like I think in one or two. I don't know what they got now. That's gotta be a costly deal, 'cause I mean, that building was, I don't wanna be the one to go up there and attach a stick of dynamite on that crane that's about to fall bad.
Well, yeah, that was too bad. I got hurt on that deal.
Yeah, there was, yeah.
There was.
I'd just like to say, this is gonna help us to figure out where we're going with our mitigation strategy at this point in time. We've got a, a ton of engineers on staff right now, just kind of waiting to get everything back from these guys, and they've done a great job, but I think probably a good move from here would be is to let these guys communicate with our, our folks and come up with a strategy on how we're gonna handle each of those bridges. Exactly, we may end up altering the route. There's, could be some no-gos in here too, is what I'm hearing. There's 10 bridges, but then there's a couple of these that may be very expensive to mitigate with. So what we can do is I can expedite that with our engineers, get them together as soon as possible and really start going to work on refining that. Snyder Associates is our engineer out of Omaha. And if we need a facility meeting here with them, and also our contractor will certainly do that and come up with a better, a better strategy on the next time you guys take a look at this, I'm sure, on exactly where we're at. But then they need to look at all the small stuff too, the small structures also. So this is a pretty extensive plan, and you guys have done a great job in getting us this information, so I appreciate that.
Good deal. So what is Snyder and Associates' role?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're an engineer of record for us, but they're not, they're civil, but they're, they do a lot of the surveying work, they do a lot of the layout work of where our roads and our turn radiuses are. They do all of the two-dimensional stuff. They're not, they're not civil engineers from the standpoint of looking at all the bridges. That's why you have to hire that done from your folks here. And then what we do is we redo our route, and then Dean Wiedemeyer is our engineer up in Omaha. And so he's the guy that, that will help to kind of maybe find a workaround. I don't know if you've talked to Dean or, probably not. But Dean will work with the, the team and we'll, we'll come up with a good alternative if need be. Or even look at alternatives up, including, you know, spanning the, the bridge with different methods. And we have civil engineers that will, will put on board with that too, so that we can kind of all agree at it and then these guys can give us the blessing too, from their standpoint.
Okay. The bottom line is, no action that we need today, today, just an update. You guys will continue to, you'll start work on the 20 footers and lasts. We'll wait until we know they wanna switch the route. I see. Before you start looking for little guys, if you will. I see, well, that makes sense.
Okay, and go get your blessing to share this information with Next Era. If we get that blessing, we'll give them this, and if we have permission to meet with them over, try to work on the details, we would try to drill it down to more of an engineering work session type stuff. And then eventually come up with a proposal there.
Okay. Dennis, anything specific that you see?
What needs to happen, I don't know, so we need to get together on it.
Such as it is here, I mean, there's no other input you might have.
We knew there was gonna be bridge trouble from the start.
Yeah.
No matter what road you take.
Right. Well, you're not gonna take a project this size.
Nope.
You know.
And like I was telling these guys, this one, there's gonna be 20 footers, 16 footers show up that's-
Wood and-
Yep.
The smaller they get, the easier it are to fix or replace.
This would be the bigger structures.
Yes.
Good. Well, say proceed, you guys, Tim and Dennis. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, appreciate that. We will work-
We had something we would, so. But this is ours really.
Okay, we'll get her done. I'll hear everybody come by with a couple of things.
Need to put our nicknames on all these. I don't know why they got, I guess, I don't know why they got this mile in here. I guess they gotta go north, see, because they're coming down 63.
Hey, whenever you would have time.
But see, they got, also to come in off here and come up and they can get and go. I don't think they need this, I'll bet that there's, there's a turbine right there, that's why they gotta have a turbine. See, there's a turbine right there.
So this must be right there, I think that's how they're getting over there in that neighborhood, right there. Cross right there, sure. Evidently, there's no, I don't see. No other way, yeah.
It's on my way over.
Oh, that was good timing. Good.
All right.
So you move pretty fast.
I was gonna say. You know, I don't understand, there's one place I don't understand how they're getting to unless this is a dotted line along north of Chicago.
Right, we were talking about that to get into these.
Thank you very much.
It's gotta be it, it's just what it looks like.
Okay. I hear where they're turning off, turning off that. I feel like it's gonna turn off from the 63, but that's Delaine Hill right there.
I mean, this is where it came.
A lot of traffic.
Now, could you just let Rich know that the commissioners are ready for a run of it?
Apparently he's there, right there in that corner inside of the building.
Oh, okay, he's not here. That would be perfect. Thanks.
Turn off that road, a lot of traffic, could be a concern.
64th and what?
63.
All of the 63s.
All of the 63s. What's Mr. Court?
Um, I think she'd want you to use some, purchase some computer equipment with some of those. It's already in the year, I believe so. Run that by you guys.
When did you get this?
It's 64th Road, right Frank?
Right.
Um, it's a day, I was calling it Tuesday. I came back Tuesday, so. Tuesday by fax and then email. Yes, I'll give him the proper, he should be talking about that from 63.
Did you mark that mark?
Yeah, I'm gonna dig the 64th Road and 63 Highway.
Yeah.
Yes, intersection.
It's close to Bridge 163 if you go across, back to the east about a mile and a half, two miles. Just from 63. And it is kind of, it's on a hill.
This is North Corning?
Yes.
And if they have to, they could probably come on down to...
They could go back the same way they came in, and west, I think.
Yeah. Come on down south of Corning, or three miles, and then go over and come back on.
Yeah, you can do this as long as I can.
Well, you can get right in the same area. Might be a little safer, but...
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
Hi, Bob. What was their rating on Bridge 184? And 169?
What was the question?
What were they rated at? What percent?
I don't know the, uh...
One point six nine.
One point six nine.
What is it, one sixty-nine?
It's rated as sufficient.
One point four seven.
On both of them?
One sixty-nine, and what's the other one?
One eighty-four.
Yeah, both of them, one point four seven. One was twenty-three foot, one was thirty-eight foot. Any factor of one or greater is considered sufficient.
Right.
Did Bob say that that individual in golf had a warrant out of Iowa?
Yeah, I think that's what he said.
Thank you.
Where most of them come from?
Wasn't me. I wasn't in golf last week.
You got an alibi?
Yeah. Bailed out, no.
Motor doesn't live there, though.
No.
Mark, when they view those cranes, do they view them from the side to side, are they allowed to cross bridges, or how do they do that?
They break them all the way down and bring them across. The, it's a million pound crane, and they can't bring all of that crane across, so they have to break everything down and bring it across. I wouldn't get too spun up about this haul route yet, because we're gonna change it. The deficiencies, as noted, I mean, I'm just looking at some of these, and I'm like, oh, okay, we can change this and be able to avoid that. It's just simply, you know, we gave you what we'd like to do, and now your, your, our engineers are gonna say, all right, we can't go that way, you know? So we have to revise this, and so, this is, this is wonderful. I mean, it's, this is gonna help us to move forward.
It's a good starting point.
Yeah.
And continues to be a work in progress.
It'll be a quick work in progress. We, we will make the modifications probably within the next few days to the haul route, and get those back over to your guys, to avoid, I would say, probably ninety-five percent of these are avoidable, and we can do certain things with the haul routes to make sure that we don't traverse. And Frank, I know Frank's comment on that, on that road, I'll bring that up with our engineer, too.
And there's, of course, there's, if you change the haul route, you may have other bridges that come into play, so that's, that's what you'll find out.
Generally, what we do is we try to stay with what we've got.
Okay, just pull a different route.
Then just do a double back if we have to, so we, we end up not going down and taking that shortcut, we end up coming all the way down and coming back across. It's just a, I mean, it's a kind of a puzzle, but it's a puzzle that at least we know the deficiencies.
Sure.
But you do have a lot of bridges in Neowah County.
Three hundred and fifty-four.
Wow.
I talked to a guy from southwest Kansas one time, I said, how many bridges do you guys have? He says, man, he shook his head, we've got four of them. And I said, well, why bother?
Yeah, why bother?
Yeah, what are we, about eight? No.
All right.
Eight? In, in the top ten of total number. Is it...
If you start counting all those twenty foot, I know they don't count those, so...
Yeah, it depends on what you count.
Right. Yeah, it does.
So I think at this time, while Mark's here, maybe I will open the floor for any other questions or comments that anyone might have.
I had a question as to, why have the commissioners changed their minds about allowing the citizens to review the documents prior to the vote? I guess, in my opinion, that seems fairly irresponsible. As you sure, you guys remember about the term sheet, it was the citizens that brought numerous concerns to the table, and several errors and oversights were caught, and they were being corrected on the term sheet up till the day before the vote, and some of them were not gonna be addressed there, and they were gonna be addressed in the final documents. We were thanked by the commissioners and attorneys for our valuable input and very professional and constructive feedback. Our county has a lot of very sharp individuals. I guess, in my opinion, it'd be foolish for the commissioners to vote on the final documents without allowing the citizens to review them. Any errors and oversights in the final documents could haunt the county for decades to come. And I do not see, what, what's the negative in having the citizens review the documents? The only negative I see is that it could potentially take more time, and I feel like a little extra time up front is well worth it, since it could save our county problems for, you know, the next thirty-plus years. And from some of the prior comments and emails and public meetings, we had the impression, or we were told, that we would have a chance to review the documents, and now we're being told we would not have the chance to review them. So I guess my question would be, why has your minds changed on this matter?
There will be several eyes look at that document, attorneys as well as the hours. It will be made public as soon as we approve it.
After it's been approved.
That's correct.
I guess I feel like the citizens of the county have very strong interest in trying to get what's best for our county, and I don't understand why it would be harmful to have the citizens review it ahead of time. I just feel like the people living here have the most invested interest, more than outside attorneys that don't even live here. And, you know, I feel like you're not trusting that the citizens could provide a professional level of assistance with these documents by denying that, that, I guess that's my personal opinion, but it's hard to, several of us citizens I know that we've been visiting with, it's hard to understand that why nobody would want to trust the input of the sharp individuals of this county to review the documents.
We had over eight hours of public input, and at the public meetings, and that's our job to review those documents, we'll do the best job we can, it will be made public at that time as soon as we review it.
Okay. If the professionals reviewed the term sheet, why did the citizens find errors in them prior to the vote, and they were being changed up until the days prior to the vote? To me, the professionals should've caught those errors and not the citizens. I mean, I could cite a couple of the errors. Listing maximum instead of minimum on time, that's huge. Failure to comply with the appealing engineer, which is not their own engineer. I mean, these were mistakes, the attorneys, and to your commissioners, in my opinion, nobody caught these on these documents until the citizens pointed them out. So if we had to catch errors on the term sheet, who's to say there's not gonna be errors on the final documents? My level of trust is not there.
Thank you, duly noted. Anything else?
I do have additional questions. I believe the engineers were also to review all the site locations.
Turban locations?
Yes. Is that happening, or going to happen, or...
I think a lot of that happened pretty early, or early, I'm not sure when, but a while back, it's that, they started... We have big locations within a hundred feet, or something like that, is that what...
Yeah, what I believe, and I better make sure that I understand the question, is you're asking about what level of oversight the engineer has on our plants in our submittal. So, we have to yet submit the foundation plans for the turbines to the engineer.
To the county engineer?
To the county's engineer, okay, for their review. There are stamped set of plans, and I know you're an engineer, so you understand that, there are stamped set of plans that they can review and give a full report to the county commissioners if there's any deficiencies noted by our engineers, which there won't be, okay? So they've gotta be, gotta be very, very, very thorough in their approach. So, our final turbine locations are established right now. We've done our...
They are, Mark?
They are, yeah.
They are, okay.
We've micro-sighted every one of them, we've verified their setbacks, we can provide the data sheet to the engineer so that they can verify the locations, and then also the other thing is, we'll provide the foundation plans to them also as a part of this, so that they can take our data and look at that and verify, and ascertain the county that the, the general practices of engineering and subsoil and whatever else are being followed here with our foundation plans. So, that all will go to your engineer as a part of the building process. It's, it's not just all turned in today, it's a process along with prior to construction, we needed to be turning those kind of things over to the county for their, their review. And again, that's part of the term sheet.
Has any of the GPS sites of the turbines changed since the release of the term sheet?
No, the, the, everything that was shown to the county, including the alternate sites, is static, it's not going to change.
The other questions would be, the engineer was to also be reviewing ice throw detection mechanisms and the decommissioning. Where are we at in the process with that?
County has not done anything with the decommissioning plan, that's over to the attorney's hands right now, I believe Mr. Neld is handling the decommissioning requirements and making sure that they get the agreements. We haven't seen any of that yet, so that's between the county's engineer, or the county's attorney, and I believe we haven't, we proposed language, but there hasn't been a return of that language yet to us, so we don't know what that is. Regarding the ice throw, I'd have to look into the details on that, I don't know the answers on that.
Okay. Do we know, has next era applied for lifetime tax abatement, or where are we at in the process of knowing if it's lifetime or ten-year abatement?
We're following the state code requirements on taxation, so it'll be ten years, and then we do have a pilot agreement with the county on the, on the term sheet that we have right now, what we're paying.
That approval process, however, is at the state.
Yes.
I guess I'm saying it's at the state, I don't know if it's actually there yet.
I believe we do have a lifetime abatement, but that, that is still, we're following state code requirements on that. So, we have a pilot with the, with the county right now, that, that we've agreed to pay the county payment in lieu of taxes, and so that's already part of the term sheet also. That's the last agreement that needs to be approved yet. The payment, there's a separate agreement, I believe there's four agreements that we haven't even seen back yet, that needs to be in place, and that just agrees to pay the amount to the county.
Just a moment ago, were you saying that you'd be getting ten-year tax abatement instead of lifetime?
No, no, we'll, we'll be getting, I believe, lifetime abatement, but we're, we've agreed with the county to pay, payment in lieu of taxes with the lifetime. I'd have to verify that, though.
Sure.
And I can get you the answer to that next week, what exactly our tax structure is at the state level right now. We have a tax department that handles all that, so I'm not that person.
Gary, I might just do a follow-up question to charities in regard to the number of errors that occurred in the term sheet, and having to correct them up until the, you know, the day, the night before, almost, of the, the vote. If there were errors, and the, and the errors were significant, and they were not caught by your attorneys, either county attorney, Mr. Lippard, and/or the hired attorney, James Neill, again, why the change in process? If, if they hadn't caught those things for you, then, why, why, why is there a change now?
I guess my question would be, define significant. You know, I mean, everybody's errors, I, I've not ever seen a contract where two parties can totally agree. I don't believe it's even possible. And I believe we could've fought over this contract, the term sheet, for even till now, because there would've been one word here, one word there. Somewhere, you got to accept professional and go. That's my opinion.
So you would describe the errors as insignificant?
It's pretty hard, I think, to get everything perfect. You know, I mean, there's, there's gonna be errors, and that's why we have a court that you very seldom see many cases that go where two people agree very well. They always got something, they've got difference of opinion, and that's the American system. But I don't feel that there was that many significant errors, what I would call, or errors, we've had them looked over, and, and we feel confident, or we'd have never voted on them, or I would have never. I have complete confidence in Mr. Neill to get this document in negotiations, if you will, there's, according to the parameters of the term sheet that we approved, I have complete confidence in him that he'll get that, dot those eyes, and submit that to us, and, and it's not just Mr. Neill that has eyes on those in his firm, I think he has more than once asked for help from his colleagues. Have you studied, like, the Neosho County road agreements? You know, that they just passed, you know, it's about that thick, and are they adequate? Was that county adequate in doing what they did? You know, I talked to one of their commissioners, and they said it's, you know, there's forty pages somebody can tear it apart, I'm sure, but...
I would comment, if there's something that's missing in an agreement, or, you know, something that both parties totally missed, I mean, there's obviously a point in time that we would have to sit down and try to rectify that. You know, you mentioned the court systems, nobody likes the court systems, I mean, honestly, you know, parties can sit down anytime and make sure that things are right, and you gotta put your best foot forward. And just like the, the road, the haul route, you know, we put our best foot forward to give you some information of where we're thinking about, and your, your, or your folks that you've hired have done a really nice job of saying, all right, here's where you're gonna have problems, all right? So now we have to go back and work on this. It, it's just like this with your attorney, and, and I'll let you know, he's taking a lot of time to review these documents, which I think is good. You know, we get turns to documents, you know, in our organization, almost two or three days. Mr. Neld's taking time on these, so I, I'm confident that we're gonna, going to get red lines back, and we're going to be working on these, too, but we just don't know what those are yet. And everything that we've done with the term sheet to date is just a, the regurgitation of the term sheet is where you're heading with these, these next documents. I don't anticipate that there're going to be any new ideas here, okay? So hopefully they're, 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 they're good documents, and that, that you guys can look at them and say, no, this is everything we captured in the term sheet, so that's what we're looking for. what we're looking forward to. Hopefully, we can get those sooner than later, but, uh, that's, that's up to your attorney.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will pose one to you, Randy, by the way, since you're here, do you anticipate introducing twenty-two sixty-nine, or whatever?
Seventy-three?
Yeah. And you don't have to say, I'm just curious, uh, there's been talk at the KAC of whether that will be introduced, I just wondered if you was representing, if it will...
I haven't done a lot of research, or investigating yet on what we're gonna do with that, but, uh, in my opinion, at this time, it'd probably be futile, so...
Why?
Well, first of all, it won't get out of committee, because most of the people on committee live in a urban area where it will never affect them, and they don't care what happens out here, that's my opinion. And they don't like me, because I make lawyers.
That vote was what, in, in committee?
Well, I think there were three out of thirteen that voted.
Pardon me?
Three out of thirteen that voted yes.
Okay. Uh, 'cause somebody told me something, and then I heard something else.
Several were freshmen, we're talking about the wind turbine bill, right?
That bill specifically, yeah, I just heard two, uh, conflicting reports about what the vote actually was.
Well, there were two for sure, and the third one says he voted for it, but I'm not sure. Some you didn't hear, you know, you can't hear everything, you don't take a, you just take a voice vote, basically. But it was pretty, I mean, it was obviously pretty much no.
So that, excuse me...
The problem, Gary, was, is when I introduced that bill, um, I knew there were gonna be amendments, but before we even got in there, it was decided that they weren't gonna allow any amendments. They allowed me to present them, one of them, and after that, they just basically called for the vote.
The chairman has the authority to do that, not allow the amendments, is that right? I'm asking a procedural question.
Didn't, the chairman was one of the yes votes to approve the bill.
So that, those votes and who they were is in fact a member, uh, that's, uh, public information?
No, because, like I said, we only take a voice vote, only reason I know it's the chairman, 'cause I heard him. I don't think we took them. Well, we might've taken a division, I can't remember if we took a division or not, and then they raised their hand, so...
But those committee members, that's a matter, who's on that committee is, is, I could find that out, I'm sure.
Oh, certainly, we bet.
And that's, which one, I can't even...
That's utilities and telecom, energy utilities and telecoms.
I could find that, go onto the website, something like that.
Kansas Legislature, sure, just Google Kansas Legislature, and it'll give you the, all the committees.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks, I just, like I say, we've been talking about that at KAC and, and it was brought up a time or two. Other questions or comments?
Can the turbines be increased in the footprint over time?
Increased as in number?
Yes.
I think the answer to that is no.
Did it come back to us?
Can the locations be changed?
Well, the sites are approved to where they're at right now.
Yeah, in your term sheet, uh, if you recall, there is the ability to, to move turbines just ever so slightly in order to ensure that, that if we need to make a slight adjustment for somebody's farming operation, it gives us some ability, but they have to stay within a certain, I think a hundred feet of where we've proposed them, so, uh, and still maintain all of the required setbacks, because that was so important to this board, is to maintain those setbacks, so those have to be maintained, but you do allow us to move ever so slightly, a hundred feet.
Plus or minus a hundred feet, but not closer to any given residence.
Residents, if you re, review the term sheet, that's, that language is in there.
Can construction begin, uh, before all the contracts are signed?
We have begun construction now, uh, on the substation work, and so, we're not, we can't use any of the roads for any heavy haul routes, uh, we have to use, uh, the existing roads and be within weight limits, so, that's where we're at right now, we've reported that, I think, out here already.
So when can turbines be constructed?
Not until we have the foundation plans approved by your engineer, uh, the, also the haul route, in order to get the turbines, there's obviously a critical part of this, uh, so not until that, that point in time.
Where is the substation at, you work no more?
Um, that's down southeast of, of Corning.
Location?
Um, I'd have to give you, I don't know the exact location, Frank, so I can give you a follow-up on that afterwards. There's a couple different substations, there's a collection substation, and then, that's one that I'm talking about right now.
Other questions, comments? Hearing none. There will be no more wind discussion in this office today.